Okay, again, there we go. Thank you. Welcome to -- I'll start again. Welcome to everybody to the May 17th Budget Committee Public Hearing. This is a hearing on the FY11 proposed budget. The purpose of this forum is to make sure that people wishing to address the Budget Committee have an opportunity to do so. People will be given three minutes to testify. Sorry if I'm being vague here, but this is new for me. Persons speaking can testify, and then the committee can ask clarifying questions after the public comment. You'll have three minutes. The buzzer will -- a light will go on when there's 30 seconds left, and a buzzer will go off at the end of three minutes. We have a handful of people scheduled to testify. And with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. First person to testify is Deb Frisch, followed by Scott Bartlett.
I thought it was third, sorry. I'd like to thank the Eugene Budget Committee for providing the fourth free televised stand-up comedy gig on cable vision in the last two weeks. You don't contribute much to society, but the free comedy gig for people like me certainly is appreciated. The first time I spoke to you all while you all play with your computer and your genitals was sort of a cost evaluation perspective, identifying two big flaws. Mike, if you and Alan could stop diddling each other, that would be great. Failure to prioritize and failure to maximize return on investment. Both of these failures are part of the catastrophic planning failure described by Budget Committee members this evening, such as Ramin talking about data and benchmarks, and other people who said, gee, wouldn't it have been good if we had done this planning in advance instead of like the day before it's due? Duh, missed that day in Thinking 101. Failure to prioritize, for example, Johnny Medlin's confession that Parks and Rec had engaged in catastrophic failure to prioritize, overemphasizing acquisition as compared to maintenance. The analogy used by Johnny Medlin is that would be analogous, the City of Eugene's attitude towards Parks and Rec would be like having a Honda, Porsche, Chevy, Buick, and Toyota, but no money for gas, oil, and tires. Mr. Medlin should be liberated of his employment with the City of Eugene, given his confession of catastrophic mismanagement at your meeting. Testimony, it was. Failure to prioritize, as you pay a million dollars to harangue law firm, to pay Jeff Matthews 350 bucks to pay civil litigants like me, not cost-effective, 200,000 for animal reg, much more useful than a million dollars to Jeff Matthews. Failure to prioritize was discussed catastrophically by Chief Kearns at the last Eugene Police Commission meeting, where Chief Kearns came out as accusing former Chief Lehner as essentially engaging in official misconduct, when he failed to hire replacements for a lot of people who retired, probably in wake of the McGonagall scandal in 2007, opting instead to divert that money to overtime. Mr. Kearns showed beyond a reasonable doubt that Mr. Lehner is responsible for enormous suffering and damages to people by padding the wallets of the McKees and McDonald's and whatnots and not hiring new people. The understaffing is totally linked to the huge increase in response times. And I thank Chief Kearns for having the honor to reveal the malfeasance of his predecessor, who ironically has an MBA from the University of Arizona. In my last 32, 31, 30 seconds, I would like to talk about the oil gush in Louisiana that is now at about 2 million gallons a day. Also catastrophic failure to prioritize, the desire of the US government to allow BP to salvage as much gas as they can before filling the well is disgusting, to care more about BP's profits than the dolphins and porpoises and shrimp. Think of all that bullion base, think of all that scampi. It's hard to get anything but a vapid look from you all, vapid, vacuous, vacant. Good night and good duck.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
At the end, Joe will do the questions at the end. Scott Bartlett, followed by Zach Vissna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Honorable Budget Committee Members. It's the third time I've had the pleasure to talk to you briefly about this matter. I am a member of the Lane County Budget Committee, and I was watching on TV, and there's some questions. As far as I know, there's every intent, and believe me, if I have anything to say about it, and I've been on the Budget Committee off and on for 17 years, and know each of the commissioners pretty well. There will be no disruption of that service, but next year we are facing a $10 million deficit, and between 2007 and 2012, the county may lose $47 million of federal funds. I still think they'll be renewed, but it's anyone's guess. Two years ago, it was proposed that LCAS be eliminated. 4,000 people weighed in to the rafters. It was some people's worst nightmare to have to deal with that, but it's a sort of the third rail, if you know about subways, you don't want to step on the third rail, of local politics. It's an important issue. I would recommend that you accept Vice Chair Siret's amendment or motion. The county delivers a very good service to you. When I hear things like efficiencies and partners, we've had a good relationship for 32 years. Dr. Holster says if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think it's kind of like a marriage. If one spouse comes in later than the other and says, honey, I'm home, but I'm looking at alternative options and different models and partners, I don't think it would be particularly good for domestic harmony. I think that there's been a really good working relationship with a high efficiency, and the real metric that we've used is saving lives and delivering service. And the real reforms at LCAS have been driven by Eugenians, myself included. I mean, hundreds of people have been involved over the last eight years in having a really good product. Are there other theoretical models? Yes, but we've looked at them, and when you apply to the real facts of this ground in terms of applicability, I see no other models that could work. Enforcement is a very important issue, and I noticed that Ramin Shojai last time pointed out that there's a great deal of enforcement revenue already generated. Can there be more? You bet. Can, for example, the city council up the penalty for veterinarians not reporting rabies vaccinations, which both governments enacted in order to boost up licenses? You bet. Are there other things the city could do, such as posting signs in all dog parks and all parks? You bet. Incorporating mailings? You bet. In Pittsburgh, for example, Allegheny County, they inserted into their tax bill a pretty severe warning saying, hey, if you don't license your dog, 350 bucks a day. Guess what happened? Within one year, their licenses increased from 44,000 to over 100,000. We have been pleading with the assessor to put it in. Finally, after six years last year, they put it in. There's much to do, but let's keep this good relationship going. Thank you.
Zach Vissna, followed by Carrie Lieberman.
Hello, Zach Vissna. I was kind of checking back on a certain part of the budget, an extra 140,000 to be raised near the U of O campus. And from what I understand, it's still in the budget. And, you know, I already held the city manager's feet to the fire. I would just hold the rest of the committee's feet to the fire at this point because you're an enabling factor, and are you willing to let the city manager extract funds from one neighborhood or a couple neighborhoods when he's not doing that with other neighborhoods? And so I urge you to question that because it's not well-aired. The register guard thinks it's a great idea, as we've already heard, and so that creates a really -- just it creates more of a divide between the students and the downtown. We shouldn't be kind of circling the students like scavengers for the city budget. We should be trying to get them involved and more -- less confrontation in the planning in the riverfront. Right now, I'd say you'd have about a worst-case scenario as far as the students versus City Hall at that. And I think part of it is this type of nickel and diming, and also the processes during the summer, which I mentioned at the other hearing, which is this upcoming alley vacation. I've been researching it a little bit because I do think it relates to the city's budget because you allocate a lot of money for public involvement, and if the city's evasive when they come up to required hearings and try to time them for as little input as possible, then that's good public involvement and good information that could have been gleaned. So there are two different answers floating around. Today at the Planning Commission meeting, they said that there will be one hearing before the city council about the vacation of Moss Street. About two days ago, at the atrium building, at the planning counter, the planner told me there'd be a hearing first before the Planning Commission, and then about a month later, there'd be one before the city council. I'm hoping to properly notify people about the hearings and give them information about how to appeal and these things, and give them good information. So I'm wondering if there's any way tonight you can clarify the potential timing during the summer of the hearings, and whether they'll be planning two hearings or just one before the city council, and whether it's subject to appeal. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Carrie Lieberman, followed by Jim Byer.
Hello, I'm Carrie Lieberman. I'm the Executive Director of Green Hill Humane Society, and I've been a Eugene resident for over 18 years. I've come tonight to introduce myself to the committee and also talk about animal services. I'd like to let the committee know that I support the work and exploration that has been done here in regards to the animal control budget, and I support the direction that I heard the conversation go in the Budget Committee last week. It makes sense to look at the animal control budget and consider whether the services that are paid for can be delivered more efficiently. It makes sense to look at cooperative models, makes sense to open up the conversation, explore the options, and decide upon a direction that will improve the situation for both two- and four-legged residents of Eugene. As I heard echoed at last week's meeting, it also makes sense to be concerned about the impacts of reducing animal control coverage for the city and how that will affect the animals in our community, as well as the safety and well-being of our citizens. The city is moving in a positive direction by opening up this conversation and looking at alternative models. Through the process of coming together to explore collaborations and roles among community partners, we can develop a system that improves the situation for homeless, lost, abused, and neglected animals, while at the same time improving the sense of safety and security that our residents feel. As noted in Kristy Hammett's May 7 memorandum, other communities are exploring these same issues. While in many ways Eugene is actually ahead of the curve when it comes to animal welfare, we are fortunate that there are communities that are a little further along, and we can look to them for examples and models. Should be noted, however, that in all of the communities where things are working well, in every case, there is both a well-functioning publicly-funded animal control component and a well-functioning humane society component. There are clearly defined and delimited roles, and no one is doing it perfectly. There is still a holy grail that everyone is searching for. My recommendation would be to reconsider the $200,000 cut until the time is spent to explore it, and explore whether it really makes the most sense or whether it would truly result in lost core services. I would recommend starting the exploration soon and look at not only partnerships that can happen with various government and community organizations, but also other funding models. As Karen Gaffney spoke about at the Budget Meeting last week, there are examples of increasing revenue. Some easy examples include aligning the city and county fines for unlicensed animals and increasing the number of dogs allowed in the city so that more people will actually license the third dog that they have. Some more complex changes might come from looking at the Calgary model. While Calgary Animal Services has their entire $5 million budget funded through licensing fees, but the system also comes with stiff and swift penalties for not complying with the law. In the best-case scenario, we will have a community in which our citizens feel protected from dangerous animals. Lost pets will be returned to their owners. Pets that are abused or neglected will be removed. Situation. And pets that are homeless will be sheltered and cared for until they are adopted into new homes. We are very close to that reality, and I'm looking forward to the conversations and explorations, which will hopefully result in us moving closer. Please know also that Green Hill Humane Society will be here to fulfill the needs of the animals to our best ability.
Thanks. Thank you. Jim Byer, followed by Eric Fisher.
I'm Jim Byer. I'm a member of the Board of Friends of Hendrix Park, and I'm a longtime volunteer in Hendrix Park, and I'm here to testify again on behalf of the Friends in support of the $30,000 to be included for the forest management plan. Tonight, I just want to speak briefly about the important role that the coordinator position has provided to maximize volunteer hours in the park. Volunteers come from two main sources. They come from monthly Saturday work parties, and they come through contribution of volunteer hours from the Northwest Youth Corps that the city and the Friends have partnered with to provide work. They also give part of their time through actual volunteer hours. The value of these volunteer hours is tremendous. Since 2006, the volunteer Saturday work parties have produced over 2,300 volunteer work hours at a value that exceeds $47,000. You add to that during the same period the dollars provided by Northwest Youth Corps, and that's roughly $4,000. So I think by any standard, you could consider this to be a significant volunteer resource. One of the important roles that the coordinator plays has been coordinating youth participation in the forest restoration. The youth volunteers come from the Outdoor High School, they come from Edison School, and they come from HEP, which is the high school equivalency program which is located on the University of Oregon campus. This takes a great deal of coordination to make this happen. It's not going to happen on its own, and it's an important resource for the forest. But in addition, there are other benefits that I think we could all identify from having youth get to work in an urban forest, understand what real hard work is, what it looks like at the end of the day when you've pulled out a bunch of ivy, and also to become familiar with what an urban forest can be. So we think that this youth participation is very important. Friends of Hendrix Park has been a longtime partner with the city in the management of the forest, and we think that the coordinator position has provided an invaluable contribution to the creating and management of volunteer participation in that effort.
Thank you. Eric Fisher, followed by Mary Ann Holster.
Hi, my name is Eric Fisher. I'm another Friends of Hendrix Park board person. I guess we're popping up at these hearings like perennials. We're here to make the pitch for Hendrix Park and its forest funding. But first, I wanted to say that you should be glad if you did not go to Hendrix Park last Mother's Day because there were mobs of moms there. It's a lovely tradition, but it takes the entire Hendrix Park staff and about a half a dozen of us from Friends of Hendrix Park to try to help organize what could be mayhem. So many people come. It gets very difficult to find a parking space there on Mother's Day. I was tempted to say it's as hard to find a good parking space at Hendrix Park on Mother's Day as it is to find a budget surplus, but I didn't want to exaggerate. But moms and roadies go beautifully together, but many of the moms and their families come to go to the forest as well on Mother's Day and many other days. And if you haven't been there lately, you'd be amazed at how far the forest has come in the last 10 years. It's so much more now than trees and ivy. It's the whole ensemble. It's a real forest with shrubs and wildflowers, the things that the ivy smothers so effectively. And just as a forest is more than its trees, so the park is more than its forest. It's the community, it's the volunteers that Jim was just speaking of, that the forest coordinator has nurtured along with the wildflowers. These folks are the roots of Hendrix Park Forest. So without continuing the hard work of the last 10 years, if we stop now, we'll lose ground, literally, to the ivy and the other invasives. We'll lose more money later when we try to make up that lost ground later, and we'll risk losing some of these community roots that help Hendrix Park grow. So thank you very much. Please fund the forest. Thank you for all the work you do.
Mary Ann Holster, followed by Diane Silverman.
Hello. I speak as an individual citizen, and I do not reflect the opinions of the Budget Committee. They haven't voted yet. So I want to say that I served on the county budget during the early times when the problems, early problems at animal control were discussed, as Scott Bartlett has mentioned to you. And I think that they have done a great deal to make a very efficient, given the very lean budget that they have, of which 200,000 is a very big piece. They -- 99% of the dogs that have been found or returned or come to the shelter are either given back to their owners or adopted. Only .03 are now euthanized. Most of those are being dogs that cannot learn to be controlled. In case of cats, 75%, according to the latest O'Nines statistics, were either returned to owners or adopted. They have an 11% euthanasia report because it's very -- there are just many, many more Animal control is a public health problem. We have contaminants, disease, and dog bites, strong dog bites. Almost everybody has a friend who's told me that they know somebody who's been severely bitten enough to go to the hospital and have stitches from a loose dog. County is the actual provider of animal services in general, and the city pays $200,000 to do its part for the animals that live in the city. Well, demographically, we can't find out exactly how many animals live in the city and how many live in the county, but it's observed that probably 80% of the animals need to be controlled probably live in the city. So it seems important that the city contribute to their control. As far as them being inefficient, I do not believe that is the case. Yes, the shelter needs to be rebuilt, and perhaps they're studying it in times when it's not depression, to build a new shelter. But whether we do it or contracting to an outside firm outside of Lane County doesn't seem to me to talk to the sustainability of an animal control. The county and the city have heretofore been cooperative in this, but it doesn't appear as simply as a citizen that that has yet really happened. So I'm hoping that it will happen and that we can keep the services that we have and not further decimate them. One and a half animal control officers would be for the entire city under that.
Diane Silverman, followed by Kathleen McGill.
My husband and I moved to Eugene about four years ago, and we were really excited about moving to a positive community that we felt was wonderful, and we still do. But I've been involved with animal rescue and animal welfare for about 25 years and looked for something to get involved with, and I ended up volunteering at LCAS. And was very discouraged about how I felt things were there. Volunteers were not encouraged. The staff didn't like really dealing with volunteers. I thought the quality of life of animals while there was not particularly good. There was not an emphasis on adoptability or really a positive feeling. But over the last three years, that's changed. I've been volunteering at LCAS for about four years, and I've seen a major improvement in the last number of years. And now the staff there interacts well with the public and with volunteers, and cares about the animals and their quality of life while living at LCAS. They focus on adoptability, on medical care, and it's just an overall much better feeling for me and other volunteers who spend time there. And the volunteer base has improved dramatically as far as numbers, too. And so my concern is that if funding is cut for LCAS, that all of the positive benefits that have happened over the past three years or so are going to go back, and it's going to end up the way it used to be. And to me, that's just a major detriment to the animals in the community and also to those of us who work with animal welfare and rescue and the community in general. So since the City of Eugene's funding is very important in continuing the improvement in care for the animals here, I would hope that you please consider continuing the funding at least at the current level for LCAS. Thank you.
Kathleen McGill, followed by Natalie Jordan.
Hi. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Catherine McGill, and I'm a resident of the City of Eugene. I'm a registered nurse at Riverbend, and I'm a volunteer at Lane County Animal Services. Lane County Animal Services makes available a comprehensive service to our city and surrounding areas that no other group or organization can provide. They manage dangerous, unsafe, neglected, abused animals, mend and heal the sick, spay and neuter, provide vaccines, and foster and adopt animals. Lane County Animal Services functions as a triage by utilizing other agencies and groups to place and care for animals in an effective, safe, and ethical manner. The proposed budget cut will greatly impact this bare-bones service and is unsafe for our community and city. Animal services are a basic need like clean water, sewage, ambulance, and police services. This is not an issue of two-legged versus four-legged. Domestic animals exist in our community because people in our city have chosen to make them part of our community, and there lays the foundation of our responsibility. I urge the committee, if you have not already, to make a trip down to Lane County Animal Services and see the great work they do with limited funds and an infrastructure they have. If you have not been, I would be more than happy to have you guys come down with me, and I can show you the great work they do. Thank you.
Hi, this is my first time to one of these meetings, so I have a very quick comment on Amazon pool. I'm here because I have two small children, and I read in the paper that you are considering postponing the opening of the pool by a month, and I would just like to offer a possible alternative. Since July is such a nice month here in Eugene, and we all kind of pay a weather tax to live in such a wonderful place during the summer, I had the idea of maybe opening at 4th of July, so delaying the opening. Last year, I believe, the pool opened around June 20th, June 21st, so delay the opening to the 4th of July, and then close the pool maybe a week early, since it tends to close right around Labor Day, right before school starts, maybe just close it a week early. And so split that, maybe that wouldn't be a month, maybe that would be like three weeks, but maybe split that time up instead of delaying the opening until the end of July. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and giving testimony.
Can I ask a question, John?
Yeah, we'll get the questions. I get to talk first. That's the privilege. So I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Your input does weigh on our decision-making factors. It helps us be more informed committee members, and again, thank you for coming out. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask Carrie a question? I was representing Green Hill.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You'll be on the air.
Calgary's up in Canada. They have both a Humane Society up there and also Calgary Animal Services. They're two different organizations. The way Calgary Animal Services actually came down and spoke to the Lane County Commissioners about their program. They see their role as protecting people from animals. The Humane Society protects animals from people. They clearly delineate those. They have an extremely successful model. Their Calgary Animal Control is funded at about $5 million. The Humane Society is about $7 million a year. Animal Control takes in about 5,000 animals a year. The Humane Society takes in about 7,000. The return-to-owner rate is incredible for the Animal Control. And that's primarily because they have a community that really takes responsibility towards animals seriously. They have over a 90% license rate in that community. But it's taken years to get there, and it's been a large community conversation. The Director of Calgary Animal Services is extremely knowledgeable. He's a professional. He has made connections in the community and really promoted the cause.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you all for coming out. And with that, we will move on to actual deliberations on the FY10 budget. Council Prior is leaving us because of other duties. So I guess I would just like to put out to the body here and ask if there's any specific motions or anything, any direction that you would like us to see us going for the next 45 minutes or so before we adjourn this meeting? Okay, all right. Well, what I, what my intent is, is to try and get as much work done tonight as we can because I believe that on Wednesday's meeting, we will have a very full and packed discussion and agenda. So with that, I think I'm going to ask Council Polling to put his motion on the table because I think it would have an effect on very many other motions that will be going forward.
That motion is, "I move that the City of Eugene Budget Committee and Eugene City Council shall not use one-time monies to fund ongoing expenditures when making amendments to the FY11 proposed budget."
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And just for myself, and this is just, I haven't sat up here before, so, and I'm sure many other Budget Committee members haven't sat up here. So I think the procedure is if, when you're speaking, you press the button?
The mute light needs to be off when you speak.
Okay, so the mute.
The yellow button.
Okay.
The white button is the one that you hit to tell you that we want to speak.
Okay. I'm just going to use hands for that. But, so thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Question, Jennifer?
Yes.
The spotlight doesn't work.
So regarding this particular motion, John, earlier in the previous meeting, we had discussed doing the $150,000 add to HSC instead of doing the $200,000 to the Community Action Plan. Was that correct? Was that linked to HSC?
It was linked to HSC, but it was 100 from the Community Action Plan and the DDP and then 15 from the Economic Development.
And are those considered one-time monies?
Yes. Climate Action Plan and the DESP and the Economic Development are one-time monies. That's correct.
Hmm. Because I did, I do support that effort, but then I can't vote, then I, but I also support George's motion. Hmm.
Mary Ann.
I've got to keep.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. There's a list here. Andrea.
Thank you. So I appreciate the spirit that Council Polling's trying to take with this, but I think that if we pass this motion and we enact it, then I almost feel like why then convene the Budget Committee? Because this is the opportunity, in my opinion anyway, that the Budget Committee gets to weigh in on the priorities of what they think are as far as their opinions from the community standpoint. And so if this were to pass, then I would think that we wouldn't need to have a Budget Committee because then we would not manipulate, not, I wouldn't use the word manipulate, wouldn't, I'm trying to speak to your motion. Oh, I'm trying to, I've lost my train of thought. So I wouldn't think that we need to convene the Budget Committee because what we're asking of them is to help us prioritize what the values from the community aspect is of the budget that John has presented us. So that's why I can't support this motion.
All right. Mary Ann? Put me down.
The budget is actually a proposal. It's set in stone that some members will use in different ways. It's a proposal, a plan. And so we have a contingency fund that we don't, the budget doesn't affect the project, but that's been used for one-time money. I'd like to all to use. We also have plans that have all those things that don't happen, and it's one of the fair. The other thing to move on is a problem for anybody in our country, that moving money to focus, focus down what you do, and duty to sustain the plan. But in a lot of areas, in ongoing concessions, if you're younger, how do you fill up? You probably have a price to move to do this. It's a good test. It doesn't seem realistic. It's a good spirit that I give to them, and it's, it's gold. But right now, if the law, if the county and the city have to screen very hard, I don't think that we can carry that policy. That's a policy, and I guess probably, well, the budget doesn't play policy because we go down the money, and our money's not a policy. So I think right now, that's a policy we should not have at this issue. We can work through it.
Thank you. George? Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that was on. First of all, in reference to Andrew's comment about no need to convene the Budget Committee, the direction that we were given was to come up with funding, if you want to change one of the recommendations, is to come up with funding. Well, that is to make a recommendation to change on an ongoing project, you use ongoing funds. It's fiscally irresponsible to continually use one-time monies on ongoing expenditures. And Claire, you know, I'm sorry, Claire, but you, I think, actually made my argument for me for this motion in your comments in our work session, when you say, when you were talking about the HSC money, that this is a continuation of the one-time funding. For at least three years that I can remember, we've been doing one-time fundings to supplement the over $1 million we're already giving to HSC. So this is an example of what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make is we have to quit using the one-time monies for ongoing expenditures. You know, and a contingency fund is just that, a contingency fund, once the budget is finalized and something comes up, then you dip into the contingency fund. You don't dip into the contingency fund before the budget is even finalized. So, you know, I'm, hopefully this will get a little bit more support than what I'm hearing. I'm not going to withdraw the motion, but I think that it's important that we understand that we have done this for many years, and we've frittered away money, and it's time that we absolutely stop doing this.
I put myself down in the queue. I have a question regarding the opinion of the city attorneys. Did you have an opportunity to look at that, George? And you didn't want to amend it because of the exception that he noted?
To tell you the truth, I really didn't quite understand it all.
Could the city attorney join us at the table?
I'm not a lawyer, so.
I'm not either, and that's why I wanted to.
Is the exception?
So could you explain your findings on this?
The motion by the Budget Committee is a direction to vote the Budget Committee and the City Council. The Budget Committee cannot limit what the City Council can do. So if the motion said, move to provide that the Budget Committee will only use one-time dollars for one-time expenses, there wouldn't have been any legal concern. Geez, I was raised, because the Budget Committee can't tell the Council what it can or cannot do.
So that being said, you may want to take that one sentence about the City Council.
Well, if I could do, and propose this as a friendly amendment, is change it to move that the City of Eugene Budget Committee shall not use one-time monies to fund ongoing expenditures, and make a recommendation that the Eugene City Council shall not also use it.
Would that be a more appropriate way of wording it?
Yes, there's no problem with the Budget Committee making recommendations to the City Council.
And if the second?
They'll accept that.
Okay. So then, I guess my question for the city attorney is, then what would the process be if this motion were passed, if the body wanted to spend one-time money on an ongoing basis? Make a motion to spend, basically to go against this? How would we have to make a motion to amend this, this motion? I'm just trying to get the procedural down because I have a feeling that there will be motions that will be put forth to do one-time monies for ongoing expenditures.
The answer to that question really depends on how the Chair wants to deal with such a motion. Legally, if the Budget Committee passes this motion, and then the next motion is to use one-time dollars for ongoing expenses, there's nothing illegal about the Budget Committee doing that. You pass this motion, the Budget Committee can amend the motion, and you can amend the motion either explicitly by moving to amend the prior motion, or you can amend the motion implicitly by simply doing something inconsistent with the previous motion that you've adopted. I know some Chairs who would rule it when the second motion is made, would rule that that second motion is out of order because of the prior motion that was adopted. The Chair wouldn't have to do that, and if the Chair didn't do that, and the Budget Committee passed that second motion to use one-time dollars for ongoing expenses, that would be a lawful motion. So the second paragraph of my comments in what was handed out really talks about, this motion really isn't so much a legal motion as it is an expression of intent. And if the Budget Committee, for example, voted 14 to 2 to pass this motion, that might be an indication to anybody who's going to suggest using one-time dollars for ongoing expenses, that that motion isn't going to pass. So it's more of an intent than a legal preclusion. The Chair has the prerogative to declare a future motion out of order if it's inconsistent with this one, in which case the maker of the motion would then move to amend this motion. But it's really up to the Chair.
All right, thank you, and thank you for clarifying that because this is way above my pay scale. So getting to the motion, I agree with the intent of the motion. I believe that the Budget Committee should be moving towards a sustainable budget, and that means exactly what the motion is intending. However, I have reservations about it because I believe that in certain times, there are needs for one-time dollars for bridge-type expenditures, and so I'm ambiguous about this. Having heard what Glenn just said, I would be inclined not to rule a motion out of order and let the body go to it, just so that the body knows that that's the direction I'm leaning. And then I have one more question for the city manager. Well, that's all right, I'll ask that off the record. Mike Clark.
Thank you. I think that George is absolutely right, that part of the challenge we have in front of us, we've gotten into over several years of spending reserve for revenue shortfall and putting ourselves in the position to create long-term obligations. That said, I'm not going to support his motion as much as I'd like to, and as much as I will probably vote that way about all things. I haven't worked out the details of the ongoing operational expenditure of the motion I'm going to make, and so I wouldn't want to make a vote on this in the affirmative and then propose something that would violate it. So I, and I'm not sure I'm going to do it that way, but I, in prudence, I'm not going to vote for it in case I do, but I agree with the principle of it.
Claire.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion, but I think part of the reason is because there's a semantics involved, too, in terms of what's ongoing funding and what's one-time funding, and I think the HSC funding is a perfect example of that. I think its intention is meant to be one-time, and every year, it's been, for four years, I think, has been brought forward in that context. If it can be created to find a place to be ongoing, that's excellent, but it gets fuzzy in terms of what's what when we start to look at it in that way. So I think, kind of as John said, that having the ability for this Budget Committee to make the recommendation, as Mary Ann has reminded us, our final vote is really a recommendation to the City Council, to have that flexibility to say, these are one-time monies, not meant to be ongoing this year, I think is preferable to having a motion that potentially puts us in this awkward, does the Chair rule against a motion as out of order or not? And maybe, I think it's a good policy for us to maybe have as individuals, as we vote on particular motions, that if I personally don't want to use one-time money for things, then I'm going to vote against that motion. I think that's a perfectly legitimate position, but to have it be a binding thing for all of us, I'm not in support of.
Patty.
Thank you. I agree. I think we should keep this idea in mind while voting, but I don't think that the motion itself would, it's not binding, it wouldn't really mean anything, anyway. But I think it's good that George brought it, that Council Polling brought it up, so that we can, it's something we can keep in mind as we vote on separate things. Thanks.
Anybody else? George, would you like to speak to it one more time before you vote?
No, but, yes, but I just don't know where to start, other than, you know, again, Claire is making my point very clear, where it's four years of one-time funding for something over and over and over. That is no longer a one-time expenditure. That's an ongoing expenditure. So call it what it is, let's find the money to fund the additional $150,000 in addition to the one-point-plus million we're already giving to HSC, and quit calling it one-time funding. Four years is not one-time funding. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't agree with that.
All right. With that, I'd like to call for the vote on the motion. The motion, amended motion reads, "Move that the City of Eugene Budget Committee shall not use one-time monies to fund ongoing expenditures when making amendments to the FY11 budget," and?
To make recommendation to the City Council that they do the same.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, abstaining. Two.
You can't abstain.
Can't abstain?
I think you can unless it's a direct conflict, and then you'd have to, you'd have to declare that.
Point of order, I think the Budget Committee operates under the same operating procedures as the Council, unless I'm mistaken, when it comes to voting, in which case.
This is procedural stuff. I do not know the answer to that.
In which case, you can't abstain.
Is there anybody that can answer that question for me?
The rule with the City Council and elected officials generally, officials may not abstain because they were elected to take decisions. So either they refuse themselves because they have conflicts, or they vote yes or no. I don't know the rules for the Budget Committee. There are lots of boards and commissions, not necessarily the City of Eugene, but other public entities that I used to advise where extensions were allowed. My suggestion for you for today is, since
If this motion passes, that's a, that's 20 minutes to a half an hour that we'll be staying later on Wednesday. So, Claire?
Well, just to speak to that, I think because of the discussion we had before the public hearing, there's still many of us who are trying to figure out some funding ideas, and it might be more valuable to spend that extra time on Wednesday and to, not that I'm trying to get home early, but...
Just real quick on the request, what we took away from the earlier sessions that we're going to come back with... There you go. What I took, what we took back from the earlier session was that we'll come back with price tags for the items on A5, which is different than what was originally talked about, was coming back with a $388,000 ongoing funding package. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear on that. If there's anything different, then you probably should request that. But we're coming back with the price tags on, the items on A5.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the motion to adjourn? One question or one comment is, I'm going to have a few little bit of housekeeping things that I would like to put out before we adjourn. So once the motion passes, don't get up and scramble. I just, or is that the way it works?
Yeah.
All right, well-
So hold off on the vote.
Yes, Councilor Polling? Yes, Councilor Polling?
I'm not going to be able to support the, the motion because if the city manager comes back with cuts to the next tier, then we're, as I said earlier, we're right back from the, at the very start of the Budget Committee process, where, for example, he does the close the fire station. Well, there's a bunch of us up here that are going to be absolutely opposed to that. So how long is this going to go on of, of making proposed cuts here, cuts there? You're not going to make everybody up here happy. So eventually, we're going to have to draw the line, bite the bullet, and move on with the budget. I can guarantee you of the next tier that, that the city manager's going to looking, look at, I would venture a guess that 90% or more, I will oppose any cuts to any of those. So I, I would rather we move forward with the process.
Mary Ann?
Well, in my mind, we were talking about cuts in one of the budgets, but which budgets we cut, priorities, and some of us have different priorities on what other budget, another budget to lose and what other budget to gain. So we need the opportunity to talk about it, because we have already talked about it before, initially, when we said, "We want the Hendrix Park, we want the Hendrix Park." And he's got another motion, he's brought it, and he's got the one-year, he's suggesting we vote on the bottom motion of the $350,000, no, we're voting on the Park.
We're voting to adjourn.
Yeah, we're voting to adjourn. Well, I guess I think we should talk more about it, because it doesn't seem to be clear. Although I'm, what motion is that we want to vote on?
As of right now, there's no motion on the floor, except for to, except for to adjourn.
Yeah, okay. So I have, I have this motion we're voting on, I guess I'm with adjourned.
Okay. All right. Okay. Then with that for discussion, I guess what I'm going to put out then, if this is my last spiel before adjournment, is if we do adjourn, if you guys have motions, or you need to do some wordsmithing to those motions, the earlier you could get them in, the better. Because what I would hope to do is have some sort of prioritization of these before the meeting starts on Wednesday. So if I don't know what they're going to be or how they're going to be attached, I would appreciate it getting them in as early as possible. Regarding the city manager's dollar figures, those are there just as a, as a tool for you folks to use if you're making a motion and want $200,000 to go to LCAS, there's, those are tools that you can use. And then we will have the discussion, George. So with that, that's all I wanted to say. So get things in as early as possible. Yeah, Shanda?
I didn't have a written request, if that's possible. Is that on now? I understand that there's a, for the downtown initiative strategy, that there was a proposal packet provided to council. I was wondering if I could get that emailed out, because I'd like to take a look at that in a little bit more detail.
Okay, we'll send, we'll send it down during the last four seconds.
Right. Okay. Great. That's it.
Yes.
Could I just clarify, the amendments thus far represented, what, about $388,000? Mike shaking his head, no.
That's because he hasn't put his motion out yet.
From what we know right now, it's $388,000. Our budget's $125 million?
Our budget's $121 million.
So we're talking probably then, to Alan's point, three-tenths of 1% of a, using one-time funds possibly, is that a correct statement? So the only observation I want to make is, I absolutely agree with you, George. I'll tell you, in, in the private world that I live in, man, if I could have a budget that was funded that well within three-tenths of 1%, life would be good. Just more just a compliment, saying it's not as dire as it looks, by the way, quite frankly. So I do actually agree with George's thoughts on it. I just think that it's, the one-time funds we're looking at is relatively immaterial compared to the overall budget.
Okay. Anybody else care to speak before we vote on the motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Can you raise them, and we'll count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, opposed? One, two, three, four. Meeting's adjourned.